October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting. If you will all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll be taking roll call Commissioner Christian.
Present.
Commissioner Inga.
Here.
Vice Chair Heschler.
Here.
And Chair Keldor.
Here.
Commissioner Maga is absent, we have quorum. Now is the time for public communications, anybody wishing to come on up? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public communications. Any written communications, I know there was one item that we've received.
Yes, we did receive one item, or one piece of correspondence, an email that came in with regards to item H three, the seven eleven project, and that's been distributed to the DIAS and posted on the city's website as well.
Thanks Eduardo. On the consent calendar, I had two items, Planning Commission meetings from September twenty sixth and October tenth, and then a receive and file related to zoning code for parking standards and mixed use. I would just want to say, I just asked one question of clarification, that it only relates to design and layout, not number of stalls. That was the only question that I had on that. If nobody wants to pull anything, I'll take a motion to approve.
I motion. I second.
And I'll take votes Commissioner Christian.
The minute, yeah, just a minute. Wait, uh, hold on.
No, sorry. One entire consent calendar, was there a response to that question regarding?
Okay, so, yeah, so, okay, so first of all, yes.
Do I need to pull it if I'm gonna even ask the question?
Yeah. So if you pull that, we can discuss it. Yeah, if you pull that, we can vote on number one, or we could wait to vote.
Okay, sure, I'll pull item number two then.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty sixth and October tenth, twenty twenty four.
I second that.
Yes.
I'll take votes Commissioner Christian.
Yes.
Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Heschler.
Yep.
Chair Keldor. Motion passes for all. Thank you, okay, yes, sorry, confused. I don't think I've ever pulled anything from consent calendar at Planning Commission before. So I did ask staff, just to make sure that I was reading it correctly, that this relates to standards for design and layout, but we're not saying that mixed use follows commercial parking standards as it relates to number of stalls.
Yes, that's correct, and yes, it is limited in scope.
So the commercial portion of the project, commercial parking standards apply based on square footage, and then for the residential portion, they're calculated based on that per unit, or if we ultimately make it a per bedroom, that's what it would be based off of.
Correct.
That was my only question, okay, if nothing else, then we can make a motion.
Actually, I did have a question, just from my own personal knowledge. So parking space dimensions, there are, there's twenty percent compact allowed in a non-residential, in a commercial. What is the size difference for compact versus a regular parking spot?
It is in length only, so the same width, eight and a half feet, but the compact spaces are shorter, they are fifteen feet.
I did not know that, when I go to, you know, the mall, I swear part of the compact ones are tighter.
Each city sets its own standards regarding compact spaces, so in some cases, the compact spaces are narrower or shorter or both.
Okay, all right, thanks Paul, I knew you'd know the answer right off the top of your head. Parking savant.
So then now, I'll accept a motion to approve Consent Calendar Item Two.
I motion.
I will second that.
And I'll take votes Commissioner Christian.
Yes.
Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Heschler.
Yep.
And Chair Keldor.
Yes.
Motion passes for all. All right, moving on to new public hearing, I'm assuming there's a staff report, or at least.
Yes, there is.
Conversation.
Yes, there is, so, yeah, we had put this on the agenda, you know, got placed on the public hearing section. This is Maria, Walter and I will go ahead and give a presentation, and so, go ahead and take away. I know, I don't hear the air conditioning on.
You're really quiet.
The unique chair member of the planning commission. The opposite gen code has issued an application for the upgrade of the ABC license at one hundred west Main Street. And this four, this is seven eleven, it's operated over thirty five years. The site is located in the southwest corner of Main Street. And if you have a new tenant in the neighborhood, commercial, you can go.
Seven eleven is approximately three thousand two hundred square feet, and it is an anchor to a shopping center that contains restaurants, office, and personal service businesses. The seven eleven currently holds or maintains a type twenty ABC license, which allows beer and wine to be sold for off-site consumption. The applicant requests the AUP primarily to upgrade the license that will include and allow the sale of distilled spirits and for off-site consumption. The food and alcohol will be stored in the refrigerator section, it's highlighted in pink, the applicant has agreed to condition this to no more than ten percent of the refrigeration area, so alcoholic beverages will only be about ten percent of the refrigeration area. Staff received public comment letter regarding concerns and trash and crime related to alcohol sales at the seven eleven. And in response, staff requested data from code enforcement, and no complaints have been received in the past full year. Staff has also discussed the case with the police department, this was already initially routed to them, and they had no comments or concerns to approve this application. So because of the communication, we went back to them and asked them for data, and to clarify if there was anything that they would be concerned related to the communication we received. And they don't have any concern since this is considered a minor upgrade. The establishment already has the sale of beer and wine, so adding distilled spirits is not that much of a concern to them. So therefore, staff believes that staff can make the required findings to approve the application. The convenience stores will offer a wider variety of beverages. They do sell food, so it's not just alcohol. The use is compatible, it's within a commercial district, there's commercial across the street, as well as on-site. Now, the applicant is required to apply for an ABC license with the state. If there is overdue concentration, they may require a PCN letter, it's called a public convenience and necessity letter. So we are also most likely gonna have to prepare that as well. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive and file the AUP, conditionally approving the project. That concludes my presentation, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. We have the applicant's representative here, as well as the manager of the seven eleven, if you have any further questions.
Thank you Maria. The ten percent will be inclusive of beer and wine, or? Yes, he's hedging behind you, so, but you can't see.
Yes, and just to follow up on that, that's, you know, I, I'm looking through the conditions, I don't see anything.
Yeah, it's a second one.
Is it?
Yeah, it's the second condition.
Okay, good, all right, I just wanna make sure we have that on there.
Yeah, it's the second condition.
Okay, perfect, okay, so, never mind, I just wanna make sure that was in there. And Maria, can you explain the PCN a little bit more clearly? The, it's a ratio of residents to?
So the state of California issues the license, we're only providing the zoning approval. And the state has established criteria that based on population data, they will approve a license, and I believe it's one for everyone, for two thousand five hundred square feet. So that's for twenty one and a restaurant. The documentation I gave is primarily for the twenty one, and there is over-concentration here, because we don't have as much population, the way they distribute, it used to be on census tract data, but in two thousand, they changed their policy to allow a license to be shared within the county, you could transfer it. So the whole process, the applicant will apply, and in, if they choose to go through a broker, they could start the process immediately after this approval. If that is way overpriced and out of their range, they may wait until January, when ABC itself makes those licenses available through a Lotto system, and you could request to buy that. And those are usually less than the ones you would buy through a broker. Their last resort is pretty much the PCN letter, where the city is saying, we understand there's not enough population in this census tract where this license is being requested, but we want this because it's favorable to the business, you know, and to the city's economic viability.
If I could just piggyback, it's very common in built-out areas where there is this over-concentration of licenses, and this is just a safety hatch to give a local jurisdiction the ability to overcome that over-concentration and find through that it is in the public convenience and necessity to allow for a type twenty one license to be issued in a given situation.
Once an AUP is granted, is there anything that can be revoked?
Yes.
And what's the process for that?
We would have to establish enough crime increase in the area.
Well, let me, let me, let me clarify, so, so yes, there is a process, similar to what the AUP is right now, there would be a serious, it depends on the violations that are occurring, depending on whether those violations are contrary to what the AUP is issued for, and if it's contrary to the conditions that have been established for the business. So we need to see the severity, the gravity of the violations, the frequency, the duration, and so we'd work with Hakeen and his crew at the city attorney's office, to then try to get conformance or compliance with the with the property owner and the person who holds the AUP. So there's that, that's kind of the first step, the second step is that if they continue to violate those conditions, then we would set it up for public hearing before the Planning Commission, and then we'd have that ability to then revoke it. So, yes, it's not something that occurs automatically, it's not something that occurs immediately, there is, there is a process, there's some due process that they have that we need to afford to them, but ultimately, yes, there is a process that could lead to that, revocation.
Thank you.
And who holds the license, the landowner or the franchisee? You know, I don't know, in this case, I don't know.
Okay, and we'll call them, yeah, so.
My, I don't know if this is for staff or for the applicant, the ten percent, where does that come from?
That's what the applicant requested to limit the alcoholic beverages, it was a voluntary.
Oh, okay, and it's the same ten percent it was when it was just beer and wine?
Uh, I, so the license was issued before the city had adopted an ordinance, so there is no previous AUP.
So do we know what the mix was before?
What the mix is, I don't know.
Okay, maybe.
You could ask the manager.
Okay.
So historic, so at some point in El Segundo history, if you qualified for a liquor license, there was no process?
There was no city process.
Got it.
Like we'd have now.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I guess we, if we're ready to hear from her.
Thank you, then we will open public communications, and first right goes to the applicant, come on up.
Thank you.
Good.
Whoa. Good evening, Madam Chair Commissioners, Jennifer Oden, I'm an attorney with Solomon Saltzman and Jameson, my office represents seven eleven Inc., thank you first to staff, and the community development director, I understand he's not here this evening, but it's been an absolute pleasure to work with your city's staff, so that speaks volumes for a city, and I really appreciate Maria's professionalism, responsiveness, it's been very nice. So I think staff did, Maria did a great job explaining kind of what the use is, right? We're all familiar, El Segundo is a small enough city, we're familiar with where the seven eleven is located. It's been there for over thirty-five years, the current franchisees are a husband and wife, they're unfortunately not here this evening, they're traveling, but their nephew, Mohammed Atif, is the general manager at the location. And the way that this was picked with respect to, you have beer and wine, would you like to continue, you know, to get distilled spirits or upgrade, if you will, from the type twenty ABC license to the type twenty one, is because licenses became available in the Los Angeles County market. Unfortunately, there's been kind of a shutdown in certain businesses, we've seen a lot of pharmacies declare bankruptcy, go close their doors, things like that, where there have been an abundance, or a more abundant, of type twenty one ABC licenses. And so what seven eleven did is they looked at their stores in different jurisdictions, this of course being one of them, and looked at the locations and said, where do we do a good job? Where do we have great, longstanding, trusted franchisees that are involved in the community, in their business? And where can we put a type twenty one ABC license that could better serve a community? This was one of the locations that was selected, and I think that just speaks to the franchisees who have been here as residents and business owners in the community for thirty-five years, with a trusted type twenty ABC license. So that's how we got to this point, with respect to the public convenience or necessity determination. The ABC license application is on file right now, it was posted at the premises, no protests have been received. No one has objected to it with the state ABC, the state ABC is doing their investigation into licensing. One of those pieces is the zoning from the city, this administrative use permit, so that's what we're here for tonight. The census tract is not over-concentrated. So ABC looks at it based on census tracts, and they take things into consideration, the number of licenses, as Maria said, one per every twenty-five hundred inhabitants in the census tract. And actually, this census tract is sixty-two point zero one point zero one, that's the name of the census tract. Three off-sale licenses, so beer, wine, and/or distilled spirits, a type twenty or a type twenty one are permitted. Currently to exist, the seven eleven, which holds the existing type twenty, and hometown market and liquor, which holds a type twenty one. On Main Street, it's in a different census tract, so they divvy it up based on census. Census tract, so, so that's kind of a little bit of the background to your point, Vice Chair, with respect to the PCN, so it's not needed in this instance. With respect to the question regarding revocation proceedings, absolutely, as Eduardo mentioned, right? Anytime you have a violation of a condition, there's thirty-plus conditions, right, on this administrative use permit, that can start the due process procedure to revoke. I'm hopeful and confident, and I know Mr. Atif is as well, as far as the franchisees as well, that they've been here for thirty-five plus years, and they've been good stewards within this community, so I don't think it will ever come to something like that, but yes, the city does have those mechanisms in place, certainly. And the license holder, to answer the question of who holds the ABC license, it is a co-licency structure, it is seven eleven Inc. and the two franchisees, as husband and wife, that hold the license. With respect to the ten percent, something that seven eleven commonly does, because they're not a liquor store, right? I mean, seven eleven is a convenience market, it provides a lot of different goods, household, cleaning, food, quick stop shop, it wants to be all-encompassing and provide this just accessory use of distilled spirits, which again, thirty-plus conditions control it. Everybody is trained with respect to the sales of alcoholic beverages. There's, they're trusted, responsible, right? Seven eleven ensures that secret shopper programs are done, where individuals come in and request either tobacco or alcohol before that can ever be sold. Identification has to be requested and shown. We did, as part of this outreach, before even filing, the administrative use permit, reached out to the El Segundo Police Department, as Maria mentioned, and were told that there's no law enforcement concerns at this establishment, and the small accessory increase of adding distilled spirits, law enforcement does not anticipate any concerns either. So with that, we would concur with staff, again, really appreciate staff's time and approval on this matter, and we're available for any other questions.
I have several.
Okay.
So I think you answered my first one, which is the why now, so the why now is there's an increased inventory available now, because of some of the other business closures that have probably happened for various reasons.
Correct.
My other questions, which you kind of expanded my question a little bit, is there are two other seven elevens, right, not too far from us here, so there's one on Mariposa and PCH.
Okay.
There's another one in El Segundo and Nash. So if there, if this new level of ABC is issued, and you guys control it, would it be shared with other franchisees?
No, a license is specific for the premises and the person.
So would you be applying for another one for either of those locations as well?
I don't know yet, I can tell you they're not on my radar right now.
Really?
Should they be?
Well, I mean, I would say if you're seven eleven Inc. operating in this area, right, it's the same zip code, it would surprise me that you are there on your radar.
Right, like I said, they really took a look, seven eleven took a look at where do we have really great stores and franchisees that we're not having any concerns or problems, questions with, and let's take a look at those, and let's see where we can add this ancillary use.
And so those other two?
Not to say that those other ones are problematic, but this one is just a really.
Super awesome.
Great example.
And so, are those other two locations in a different census tract than the one?
Yes.
So they're all three in different census tracts within our humble zip code, okay. And so they would be considered separately for over-concentration?
For over-concentration, correct, would be considered separately. The zoning would still be the same, as I understand, and I don't know actually if those other two are the same zoning here, we're neighborhood commercials, so it's zoned properly for the use. I don't know what the zoning is off the top of my head for each of those.
And so, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mark, do we know, do we know that those other seven elevens don't sell distilled? That was my.
I don't know off the top of my head, I would have to look, if I had to take a guess, or my gut would say no.
Okay, and so if they're limited to ten percent of their inventory space or display space for all of these kinds of alcohol, does that mean I'm gonna lose, like, my favorite beer?
No.
Because you're putting in?
No. No, and if you have your favorite beer, and you wanna tell the franchisee or the general manager what it is, I'm sure they'll keep it in stock for you.
Okay, duly noted.
No, that's the, that's the, that's the benefit of being, like I said, they're residents, the franchisees are residents of El Segundo, so.
Okay, those are my questions.
One other question, so if for whatever reason, doesn't sound like they have plans to, but if they were to sell the franchise, does that license get transferred to the new?
Yes, it has to go through a whole process with the state alcoholic beverage control department, and anybody that's going to come in as an ABC licensee, whether it be now under the type twenty or a type twenty one with distilled spirits, has to be vetted, qualified, and approved by the state ABC.
Thank you.
Are the hours of operation going to change with this license, or they're already currently twenty-four seven?
They are twenty-four seven with respect to the seven eleven itself, the sale of alcohol, beer and wine right now, currently is six AM to midnight, that will remain the same, six AM to midnight.
And to address the other two, not that this has any bearing, but I did a quick Google search, so the seven eleven, the subject seven eleven and the seven eleven on PCH both currently sell beer and wine. The seven eleven at, on El Segundo is full liquor.
Oh, see, I was wrong, look at that gut. Or a third.
Ms. Oden, the graphic that Marie showed, that had the pink, showed the ten percent in pink, your slogan? That's the cooler case.
Correct.
Right, aren't distilled thing, distilled alcohol usually not chilled, and most, most of the time, I see those behind the counter.
Correct, you're absolutely right, Vice Chair, so currently, this is a good example, and not that all of those cooler doors currently, because they're actually not, are selling, are used for beer, there's water, soda, other energy drinks, right? So that's just an example of it, but we'll work with staff, and yes, to address your point, distilled spirits, generally speaking, are behind the counter, and only the employee has access to them, similar to tobacco products, and thus, when a customer asks for distilled spirit, it can be handed to the customer upon checking identification.
So wait a minute, wait a minute, so that pink thing is not necessarily representative, right?
Maria, is the pink, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the pink is to show what would be ten percent.
That would be where the food and alcohol beverages that are cold, that's the location only.
Right.
But it's not the location, right?
That's just the drinks that require refrigeration.
But to Jay's point, that's not where they would be anyway, so.
Beer would, beer.
But beer is already there. Okay, so there would be a pink thing behind the counter instead. In addition, probably in addition, and so if they're limited to ten percent, and the place that they're actually going to display and sell from is a different part of the store, do they need to reduce the space that they're using for other things, because we already?
No, we're not even at the ten percent.
Okay.
No, I've never actually had a seven eleven that has been even close to that ten percent within a convenience store. It really is just accessory offerings.
Even in the ones that have?
Full, yes.
Okay. And to provide some context, I mean, the square footage of the store is thirty-two hundred square feet, so ten percent of that is three hundred and twenty, to provide some context to that, three hundred and twenty is just a few feet under a two-car garage, a typical twenty.
It's a lot of booze.
It is.
Just to give you, I can give you all some context.
The other applications we've approved for seven eleven don't have a limit for the square footage.
Oh, really?
This is a seven eleven imposed?
The one on PCH was probably done maybe four years ago, and then the El Segundo one for seven eleven, that was probably ten years ago, so we did not limit, we gave them what they asked for.
Okay.
And I'm trying to think in comparison to the hometown market, or it's at least ten percent, I would imagine.
Really, it's something that seven eleven offers to show the intent is not a liquor store, right? And then because the AUP does exist with the land, then it's not that concerned of it morphing into a liquor store, right? We're really just showing the intent is a convenience store with the ancillary offerings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, what does it cost for a liquor license?
It varies by county, generally in Los, and it varies based on off-sale or on-sale with respect to ABC licenses, because as Maria pointed out, there's only one time a year for distilled spirits, whether it's on-sale or off-sale, that you can actually apply with the ABC, and that's if there is a lottery and you're successful within the lottery. Generally speaking, if distilled spirits are involved, you have to transfer a license from within the county. Beer and wine can transfer throughout the state, liquor. Liquor has to be from within the county. So in LA County, it varies, um, fifteen to thirty-five thousand roughly for off-sale. On-sale, a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand.
And it's a one-time charge?
It's a one-time to purchase the license, transfer it from the current license holder to the transferee to which ABC has to approve. An escrow is opened, the money is held in escrow unless and until ABC actually approves the transfer, then the money changes hands.
And the lottery is for the entire county, for a census tract, for?
It depends. What ABC does is they look at the state, um, each year and they say, where do we have an under-concentration of distilled spirits licenses based on the census tracts? And so some jurisdictions won't open up for a license because they're at their maximum. Other jurisdictions, other counties will. And if they do, then, and then there's an applicant, application process. And so applicants can apply for the lottery. And if more applicants come in, applications come in, then licenses granted. Um, like Los Angeles, for example, for off-sale was just twenty-five. There was more applicants than there are available licenses of twenty-five. So then there's a priority drawing and it's computer generated. And if you're successful, then you can continue with the process with ABC. Thank you. I think if you stand there longer, we'll have more questions, so. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Keep it going.
Yeah.
I did have one question. Um, is there, and this is in general, I don't know if you have to come back to answer it, but, um, once you're issued this license and people who have these kinds of licenses floating around, is there, um, any reporting requirements up to the ABC to keep it active or anything like that?
There's an, there's an annual renewal that gets paid every year. Um, ABC has different reporting requirements with respect to on-sale versus off-sale locations. For an off-sale location, what ABC typically does is, um, it's all, it's, it's pretty enforcement-driven, right? So we've heard of the state grants for minor decoy operations, um, shoulder tap operations, right? So ABC agents come in either in conjunction with local law enforcement or by themselves and conduct undercover operations. If you have conditions on your ABC license, like this location does, for example, six AM to midnight, they come in to make sure that you're following your conditions. Um, because any violation of the ABC Act, whether it be your conditions on your license, whether it be a sale to a minor, whether it be, um, uh, sale to a drunkard, whatever it could be, can result in a revocation of your ABC license.
What happens if someone buys booze and then goes and sits in the, sits in their car in the parking lot there? And, you know, I guess maybe if there's no confrontation and there's no enforcement, nobody ever knows. But, um, you know, if, if, uh, if something happens, is that on the, um, is that on Seven-Eleven if that happens and that affects their standing?
It depends if they had reason to know, right? Um, if the person was consuming in their car, we all know that's a misdemeanor, we can't go do it. Um, no drinking in public. So if there was reason to know, then maybe, um, same thing, right? When it comes to minors, right? Uh, you have to ask for identification. There is, there is an onerous on the licensee. A license is a privilege, um, and so it is, there is an onerous on the licensee, which they have to comply with the ABC Act, state law, local law.
And are the annual fees based on sales?
No, no, it's a set fee by the state ABC.
Sort of regulatory fee, okay. How much are they?
Um, generally speaking, I want to say for an off-sale, fifteen hundred bucks to two thousand each year. But it increases every year.
Oh, does it?
Yes. Yeah, they do a new fee schedule each year.
Okay. An off-sale means you're not consuming on.
Correct, off-sale would be like what Seven-Eleven currently has, beer and wine. And the request to, for the addition of distilled spirits on-sale is a restaurant.
Yeah. I swear I'm done.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? See none, we will close the public comment period. Any conversation up here on the dais? I mean, I will say, before this conversation, I shared the concerns of the letter that we received. Um, I'm pleasantly surprised that there have not been, there is no concern from the police department and, and no calls.
I think, I think for me, I, I, I didn't share that specific concern. I, I, I was wondering though, from the, from the public, I guess the written communication that we received, they, if there are residents who live like in the area directly adjacent to that location, if they are, if they are raising concerns about trash or other kinds of nuisance that may or may not be directly related, do they need to bring, like, how do, how would we make those residents feel better about this change if they already have issues with trash or traffic? Like, do we bring those up to the, the other tenants in that shopping mall? Like, what, what, what is there to be done there? That was the only thing I, I saw on here that made me go, oh, what about that?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but there were also no code enforcement violations. So, and it might be a process where residents don't know that there is somebody at the city to call if that's a concern. And, um, which is a great point. I don't know if there's an opportunity to add as a condition of approval or something, or some notification to residents, what's the process of?
And, and I, and I think something that's not uncommon, well, well, let me, let me first say, I mean, it's always good to be neighborly and try to, you know, work it out between neighbors. In this case, it's a little bit odd because Seven-Eleven doesn't own the property. I mean, they, there's probably a management firm that kind of does that, I'm, I'm assuming. Um, if that's the case, uh, we, we could, um, you know, have, uh, you know, you may want to consider a condition that just ha, it requires, you know, something on their counter or, or on their door that says, hey, any concerns about this site? Call management company and then just provide a phone number. Um, it's similar to what we do with, for example, um, large or, or development projects that go through our, our process. If you ever, if, if you, I don't know if you've noticed, but we have a condition in there that, that requires the developer to put up a sign, uh, informing folks that if they see uh, dust or, or noise complaints emanating from the product, from the construction site, to call a certain number. So it would be kind of along the same lines, you know, maybe, maybe that might be a way to do it. Uh, the other, if barring that, I mean, they're always welcome to, to contact the city. Our code enforcement officer would go and do an investigation. And, uh, our, our code enforcement folks would make contact with the property owner and resolve it that way. Uh, probably take a little bit longer than if it was, you know, hopeful, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know. It depends on how responsive the, 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 uh, the management company would be to, to the neighbors. So that is definitely one or two ways to, to go about it. Would the planning department respond to an email like this one with that contact information for them to reach out to the management company if they have issues with trash or anything like that? No, we, we try, we try to resolve, or at least we'll, we'll investigate it. And if we deem that there is a, a, a situation, then we actually make contact with, with the, with the property owner. So we, but we wouldn't give feedback to this resident who's complaining about. Other than we would just, you know, do an investigation, no, we would have, no. We wouldn't say anything to them, like, hey, we're looking into it or? Oh, yeah, definitely. We'd say, well, yeah, we're, we're investigating it and, um, and, and, and we will take appropriate measures. Because we may go out there and it may be cleaned up. It just may have been that. Bad day. That day was the, the week that, or the day of the week that they were gonna do it. And, uh, someone saw it in the morning and they typically had someone coming that afternoon. Trash day. Right, right, exactly. So it really depends. Um, and I do, I did just want, want to, want to clarify it so that the commission i- is, is aware. Um, I don't want you going away thinking that there's been no calls for this, for this property. I mean, there's always call, police service calls. So there, there are c- uh, calls to this location. Um, and it's really a lot of, a lot of the calls that they get, you know, are, you know, kind of like unknown trouble, security checks, illegal parking. Um, there is some disturbance calls that they do get, um, uh, throughout the year. I mean, for example, like just this year alone, they've had twenty-six calls to the site. And how does that compare to other locations throughout the city? Uh, in speaking with, with, with our, with our cap, with one of the captains in, in police department, anecdotally, he says, you know what? You're gonna see a little bit of war here at this location because of the traffic, um, a, a, and, and, uh, a, a population that, that, you know, that cuts through that. Um, it's, it's at the end of the one oh five, you have Buck Wyler down the street. You know, you have, there's a lot more foot tra, well, foot traffic and, 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 and just regular traffic that, that, that will frequently pass that. So anecdotally, you'll, it's not uncommon. And so my next question was, okay, they currently serve, serve beer and wine. Um, is there a concern going to now full alcohol? Uh, our captain said he does not have any concern with that because alcohol is alcohol. Whether it's in beer form or in liquor form, it's still alcohol. So, uh, but at the end of the day, he did have, actually he did have kudos to the, um, to the manager, uh, at Seven-Eleven. And he indicated that they've always, their experience with, with PD, between PD and, and the store clerks and, and the managers have always been positive and they've always been cooperative. So, um, yeah, I just want to relay that message. And also just clarify, I, I don't want you going away thinking that there's no calls because there are calls. And that goes for, for anything. And even, even Ralph has a, has a high number of calls.
Yes, true.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what I've been wrestling with internally a bit is I feel like that is a very traffic-heavy entrance. Um, but exactly as you said, there's already alcohol being sold there. So is there this big difference between beer and wine and distilled spirits? I have the feeling as this resident does that it just amplifies it, but is that factual? That's what I'm struggling to create a case for.
Yeah, I, that was for me too. I didn't see, I, it's like, well, if you can already buy cold forty-five there, then what would happen for real if we stepped it up to distilled? And, you know, no shade to the applicant, it's probably the worst designed parking lot in town. In the city of El Segundo. Terrific. And it has nothing to do, like you could take their license away and it would still be the worst parking anywhere around. So, uh, yeah, I don't know that this makes it any worse. Well, and it is the gateway to the beach, you know? If someone is, uh, passing by El Segundo, they're far more likely to stop there for ice and beer than they would to come into town. So, you know, it's a good location for you guys for that reason, but it also, uh, has a lot more congestion there. Um, you know, my, I was gonna reach out to, I know a couple of police officers here in town. I was gonna reach out to them personally and just kind of ask anecdotally, what do you think about this? Um, I'm glad that you guys did, I'm glad that staff did. Um, I and my wife, my wife and I use that, uh, we go to the pet wash there quite often. We've been to your Seven-Eleven several times. My personal biggest concern is I feel like the, uh, the exterior of the place is really unclean. Um, and I don't, um, I suspect that's the landlord and not the franchisee. And so, but it does reflect on Seven-Eleven. And it, and I personally think it is one of the, the, um, the, the, the least maintained commercial buildings in town. There's, the sidewalks are really dirty. There's, um, you know, it's, we're, we're near the airport, so there's just grit that kind of falls from the sky. I know this because I lived near the airport. Um, and so it's sort of predisposed to, uh, needing a lot of maintenance all the time. And so I realize that, um, granting a liquor license is a completely separate issue from the cleanliness of the place, but I wish it were cleaner. You know, I wish the stucco were, were not chipped. I wish it were painted. Um, you know, I wish the, the sidewalks were pressure washed. Even the, the plaza to the west where the, uh, the sushi restaurant is, the dog wash, that area seems much cleaner. And I know that dogs are basically peeing around there, so I don't know if just it's getting pressure washed more often. But, um, I, I'd, I'd like to see a, uh, a, a, a better, I'd like it to see it cleaner and, and nicer. And again, I know that's not tied to this thing, but that's just a, a, I think it's a nuisance that I feel could be an improvement in our town. What I, what I can offer, um, Vice Chair is, is, is I can speak with our, our code enforcement staff, um, and, and, and our director and, and, um, uh, can relay the, the concerns. Cause yeah, I, I think there is kind of a dingy, uh, uh, ness to it, if you will. Um, I frequent it, I, I, I'm a, I'm a coke fanatic, so I'm always there for, for a big gulp. So, um, but yeah, and, and so, yeah, so what I, we'll offer, I mean, I'll relay this, these concerns and let's see what we can do. Maybe we can reach out to the property owner and see if there can be something done with just the, the conditions there. And hopefully they're, they'll be amenable to that and do something about that quickly.
Thank you. And we had talked about a condition of approval where the Seven-Eleven posts something. Do we know if there is something, I would assume it would have to be in the parking lot that says, if you have concerns, this is the management company information? Um, and I know that, again, that that is separate from this because Seven-Eleven is restricted in what they can do.
Right, providing that, that information.
Providing that information.
Put that information out. Um, I, I know that there's like, I don't know if there's, I haven't seen signs like that there.
I can't recall, honestly.
But, I mean, fucking, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, is there, is this kind of like, is this a nexus that we can correlate this, that we can put in a condition that just has some sort of signage either on the premises or in the Seven-Eleven or on their door somewhere that just kind of has a management.
I mean, there's already ample signage ABC requires. Um, I mean, since we have the applicant and the franchisee here, we might want to see if they're amenable to, to maybe adding some additional language. It seems like pretty light touch.
Yeah, there's also this nice new city web portal that is designed to, for, for residents to, to make, um, complaints or. And, you know, that to me would be a good, a good use of that. If somebody's got an issue with trash, yes, thank you for that plug.
That is great.
We're trying to get people to, to use them more often.
Sure, come on up.
Sure, I was just gonna reply. With respect to the signage, for if there's any questions, complaints, concerns, anything like that, there currently is at Seven-Eleven a sign on the door, and it's usually when you check out as well, that's for the Seven-Eleven helpline. Those go directly to Seven-Eleven corporate market managers and area managers as well as the franchisees. So they can act to respond to that. So if there's any condition that the city, you know, wants to put in with respect to that, absolutely. I'm happy to relay, um, the, the comments with respect to the property as a whole, as, as, as everyone mentioned, right? The, the applicant is a tenant, there's a property owner, um, with multiple tenants there. So I'm happy to relay those conditions. Something that Seven-Eleven does daily, um, is parking lot sweeps, outdoor sweeps to make sure that there is no nuisance-related activity happening, right? Power washing is something that Seven-Eleven does as well in addition to the landlord. Maybe that can be increased and we can have that conversation with the landlord. Um, so, uh, gardening is another thing that happens routinely. But, um, I can absolutely share those comments with the property owner and Seven-Eleven's happy to post anything at the store that says, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, here's the, the number to call us. Thank you.
Do, do, one last thing. Do you know if, um, if the, uh, if the license, application for the license was noticed to residents around the area?
Absolutely, great point, Vice Chair, yes. So to the point of are residents concerned or are we hearing an uprising? I can tell you, yes, ABC notices, a five-hundred-foot notification. No protests were received.
How do they do that?
Uh, uh, mailers, mailers to the, to the residents, yes. Um, no, no protests were received. There's been no objection, of course, from law enforcement. The city gets notified when there's an ABC application, generally law enforcement. There's been no objection there. And then as part of, and Eduardo or Maria could speak to this, but as part of the, um, administrative use permit application, there's notification as well within a certain radius. So we have one letter comment via email, right, by, um, an anonymous person. Uh, and I think it's, it's oftentimes what I hear in this line of work with respect to these types of applications. But in this case, looking at this location, what's been there for thirty-five plus years, the trusted law enforcement opinion with respect to what's going on there, there's just really no evidence, or as, as you said it, Madam Chair, facts, right, to, to back that up. So we would concur with, with staff and respectfully request the granting.
And Jennifer, also, um, correct me if I'm wrong, there's also an actual posting on.
Correct, correct. There's an actual posting that gets posted on the site and it was for thirty days. So anybody that's coming in also can say, hey, what's this about? What's going on, what changes happening? And that allows you to contact the state ABC as well.
The notice we sent out was for a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius and it was both to the property owners and occupants within that distance. And it was over a hundred and eighty-nine.
Thank you. So this comment probably stemmed from that?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, likely from our roasting because it came directly to the.
Right, right. I would imagine, okay. Um, how do we feel about a condition of approval on top of what's already? Um, how do we feel about a condition of approval on top of what's already noticed there? I just, I don't know. It does feel a little bit like, you know, seven eleven is taking the fall, maybe for a complex that's not being kept up, but even a notice that says, what's it called, El Segundo Connect?
Right.
Like a link to El Segundo Connect, um.
Report it.
Report it online. If you just go look for, report it, it'll take you straight to the code enforcement link.
I don't know that.
I know.
I don't know that we need to do.
Do that to them, yeah.
It would be, I don't, so, yeah, it's not, it's not seven eleven's responsibility.
No, it's not.
Let's get the landlord, landlord in here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, you know, if you wanna curry favor with the planning commission, maybe you guys, you know, have a conversation, maybe with the landlord, but I don't know that we should attach anything.
Agreed. Any other, uh, concerns, conversations out there?
So this is a receive and file? This is, uh, what, what is our responsibility here?
Usually it's teed up as a receive and file. You do have the ability to essentially in a way pull it and make a decision for yourselves, but if you're okay with the decision as, as it was made, you can receive and file the director's determination.
Okay, thank you. So are we making a motion or not, or it just is? Motion to receive and file, okay. All right. If no other concerns or questions, I'll take a motion to receive and file, yeah.
My question is mostly procedural. So in a situation like this one, when something comes to us, receive and file, if we just categorically disagree with it, we would then pull it and then it would become something else? So we would have to disagree with staff and your decision? Is that the way I, I understand it to work?
Correct.
Okay.
Any, any motions to receive and file?
I'm motion.
Any seconds?
I will second it.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Inga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Heschler?
Yes.
And Chair Keldorf?
Yes.
Motion passes for all.
Thank you. Maybe you helped us encourage having a conversation with the lands, with the landlord.
Shots for all. Not in the parking lot.
Thank you.
Car garage, yeah.
You're three hundred and twenty square feet. No new business items? Any reports from the community development department?
No, nothing to report.
City attorney's office?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Planning commissioner comments? Mr. Christian, Mr. Inga, Mr. Heschler?
Please go vote.
There you go.
Please, please, please vote.
And write in a city clerk candidate, evidently. All right, thank you. We are adjourned until, oh boy, November?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, thank you.